Mr. Johnston, Mr. Francis, Mrs. Erwin Adams here, Dr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Hoff, Mrs. McGinnis, Mr. Mignon.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood, Mr. Cook.
We have a rule call with members.
Mr. Johnston, Mr. Francis, Mrs. Erwin Adams here, Dr. Malloy.
Here.
Mr. Hoff, Mrs. McGinnis, Mr. Mignon.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood, Mr. Cook.
Okay, I'd like to announce that prior to this meeting, we had an informational session on real estate, and we had an executive session on student issues. So at this time, we'll take hearing from citizens. Anybody wishing to address us, please come to the podium. You have five minutes.
Hello, I saw on the agenda today that you're going to be voting on a curriculum. And just a few months ago, I had submitted a right-to-know request, and I got a list of all your staff. And it's surprising to me that you haven't designated at least one person to have the sole responsibility of a curriculum director with a school the size of the Altoona area school district. I think that that's important, and you should make it a priority going forward. I think you should also, before you vote on the curriculum that you're talking about tonight, make sure you know the statistics of it. Are you aware that, and are parents aware, that the Altoona area school district is still using the Lucy Coughlin reading curriculum? It's very controversial, and it's been banned in many states. The teachers are being told to use some of the good parts and then to supplement as needed, which, if you think about this, you're not going to get consistency across the schools with that, and it's just a recipe for disaster. This is the same curriculum that many of you guys that were sitting on the board several, a while ago, had an issue with the expense of sending administrators to New York City. And from what I understand, that training or that college or something is being shut down. Also, the district purchased the social-emotional learning curriculum leader in me that's already being implemented in K-9. And I just ask if you've investigated the roots or efficacy of this controversial program. It's not a blueprint program, it's not an evidence-based program. And if you look at the principles, this curriculum closely aligns with the author's religious preference of Mormon. This year and forward should be a year of change with Mr. Brad, or Mr. Hatch, Mr. Harrington. You guys should take the lead in improving the Altoona school district and setting the tone for other districts in our area. Did you know that as of fall, your elementary schools are not going to have student teachers from Penn State? So my question to you is, whose responsibility is that to ensure that those helping hands are going to be in the classroom? With teaching staff being such a priority, we should be hands-on deck to any educational institution that provides teachers and making sure that we get those helping hands, because they are going to be our future teachers. The other thing is, we're not even 30 days into the school year. And from what I understand, we're short on subs, and your classrooms are being combined. So programs like art, gym, our students are missing out on. So for each of you guys, if you're eligible and you have time, I encourage you to sign up for ESS and get in those classrooms, see what those teachers are experiencing. And I also encourage you guys as board members to be talking to the teachers who are using these curriculums, see how it's working out with them, and, you know, see how it's also impacting our children.
Okay, thank you.
Kelly Bowers, parent of district. Okay, so the district's had an issue with some of the kids on the sports teams urinating on other kids in the showers. I got a couple of questions about this, because I got kiddos, parents that had kids that it happened to, and I got kids and parents reaching out to me that got in trouble for it. The parents of the kids and some of the kids. I'm curious as to why, if the kids did the same punish, or did the same thing, why they're not getting the same punishment? Because I have parents of kids telling me that their kid got this punishment and another kid got this punishment. I know you guys can't really elaborate on that, but I'd hope that that wasn't the case if that, if the kids were all doing the same thing. And then the other thing is too, I'm curious as to why something like this, why the school district police wasn't involved in it also? Because I asked, and they said that they weren't even consulted.
Okay, anybody else wish to address us?
Good evening, my name is Thomas Quinn. I hate to admit, but this is my first board meeting in 52 years of living here. So it's nice to see a face to a name, because I know I voted for some of you guys. And with that, I put my confidence that you guys will do the right thing. But when I heard that Keith Athletic Field was up for sale, I think it's a detriment to the community. Kids use that year-round. I just drove on my way in today, and soccer is being played there. I understand the city council has a tough job trying to find funding for their bills and everything, but selling Keith Athletic is not the way to go. I think we need to do our due diligence and try to find alternative ways to raise capital. With that being said, I just, I hope you guys do the right thing and don't sell Keith Athletic for development. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. President, if I can, Mr. Quinn, I was up there last Sunday around Keith Field. I talked to you. If you don't mind me saying, you're an Army veteran, you're in the war, you wanted to come home, get married, raise a family, and live in a quiet neighborhood.
That's correct.
I don't blame you for getting up and speaking and being concerned.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wishing to address us? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you. Number three on the agenda, resolution of the Board of Directors. We have A, the America 250 PA Blair County Commission, B, the Keystone Opportunity Expansion Zone, KOEZ, resolution. Do we have a motion on those resolutions? So moved. Is there a second? Any discussion? So those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Finance, we have A, the list of payments, B, the financial reports, D, a donation from Breeze Line. Do we have a motion on those items? Is there a second? Discussion?
Yes, I have a question. On the list of payments, page seven, check number 133224. Is that who I think it is?
It, James Franklin, but it's a different James Franklin.
Okay, I just want to.
Yes, sir.
I did go through this.
Good catch.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Five, education, we have the AASD Elementary Student Code of Conduct, B, the Savus Learning Agreement for Social Studies in grades kindergarten through grade five, C, the Kids First Affiliated Services LLC Agreement, D, the Southwood Psychiatric Hospital Agreement, E, an affiliate agreement with Mount Alawishus College, F, conference travel, G, volunteer approval, H, elementary field trips, I, secondary field trips, J, expulsion request waiver of hearing and agreement. Do we have a motion on those items? Is there a second? Okay, I'll second it. Discussion?
Yeah, you know, I brought it up at the last meeting in the Savus Learning Agreement. I just wanted the public to know that we, many of us members of the board, took the time to go and view the curriculum. Mrs. Fliegel made it available to us, and I think a majority of the board took the time to go. It was a lot of stuff, like it's times five grades, so obviously you can't go through it in great detail, but you sort of go through some of the key components. And, you know, I think the public should know again that a majority of the board did go take a look. We don't take lightly. And I will still echo or voice my concern again over some of the elements of it, where the publishers, you know, to spark discussion, provide top 10 lists. I don't believe in that, because it's sort of a subjective list based on the publishers' opinion. That being said, I found it to be a pretty solid curriculum. And, you know, we'll certainly vote to approve it. I hope we can de-emphasize presenting kids with lists, because if you gave me a list of the top 10 greatest classical music composers, I would know nothing. And I would rely on that list like as my guide. And I think in the case of these kids, preventing them lists in this manner already sort of gives them a sense of the top 10 presidents in the history of the country, the top 10 threats to the world. I think we should spark discussion in other ways without presenting kids with that information. That being said, I thought it was it was well-presented, and it looked good, and I will vote for it. Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So moved. Okay, personnel, we have A, the personnel agenda items, B, the ESS substitute teacher bonus addendum, C, the ESS substitute R end addendum, B, having personal days for COTAs, CODAs. Do we have a motion on those items? Is there a second? Discussion?
You know, I like to say Doug, on retirements, A, number two, is going to be sadly missed. Yeah, it's a shame, but it's, it's time to go, yes, 62. Did a good job for the district, he was a good man.
Any other discussion? Those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Seven, business operations, we have A, copy paper, B, a time clock bid, C, repository bids, D, the capital reserve list of payments, E, estate donations, F, AAJH, the junior high school turf request for proposal, G, the junior high exterior cleaning request for proposal, H, Amtran drivers, I, the junior high school walk-in freezer. Do we have a motion for those items? So moved. Is there a second? Discussion?
Yes, I have on the turf, I would like to see that, perhaps look into that for naming rights. And the NFL, after the Aaron Rodgers incident, they're looking at natural grass, so perhaps that may be an option, natural grass, and I like to see naming rights on that also.
Any other discussion? Those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? So moved. Eight, facilities maintenance, A, we have a new maintenance vehicle under A, B, engineering services, do we have a motion on those items? Is there a motion? So, is there a second? Okay, I'll second. Discussion?
So we need a plow truck. How old is the, is the truck we have now? 2008. I know it's a sold truck, plow truck, she's pretty heavy. Is that? So what's wrong with it? No, these trucks are, these taken to a car wash and hosed, wandered down to get the salt off and because I see some of these vehicles have a lot of rust. My truck, I get rust on it and the salt, I hose it off, I spray paint it. I hope we're doing that to our vehicles. I know it's not our personal vehicles, but it's their vehicles, you know, they're paying for it, you know, and we need to take care of these vehicles.
Well, we do, and they are well-maintained, I'll say that.
I hope so. Because in the past, we've had district vehicles taken to the CTC in the auto body, blasted, painted. You know, it's going to take a while, you know, in the off-season, but they'll have a vehicle ready for you. It's something to look into. We should do more of that, utilize the CTC up there. Okay, that's all I thought. Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion?
The geotech for the wall, is that for the whole way around, or is that just for the portions that's falling down?
Now, can we go back? Now, can we go back on the architect for not, you know, putting them retainers? There's like four retainers, everyone, what was it? Fifth Avenue there.
We talked a little bit about that, and we've investigated that possibility, identified who that would be from the architect for the project. In terms of looking at litigating and/or length of time that it would take to see any type of return on that, it would likely be more expensive than it would be profitable in terms of getting any kind of restitution for any errors and omissions or any other mistakes that might have been made. Just to Eric's point, that we're looking at like the 35-yard line down, so that darker, the darker, smaller stone down through the brick towards the CTC, that would be the area that we'd be looking at, starting as kind of phase one of this project. And then phase two would be more of, as Doug had mentioned, some re-pointing and some other pieces to solidify from the 35 all the way around down towards Sixth Avenue.
It just seems like the job wasn't completed. I don't know what to say.
I mean, it's, I think part of what my understanding of it is, is that when we did what we did with the demolition and then the fill and then subsequent fuel construction, there was some exposure to the, really the geotechnical piece, the underground, where a lot of those buttresses and things were meant to support. There's a lot of crevices and cracks where water is getting in. And when we get into the winter months, when you get water and expansion, we're probably only going to see worse things going on in terms of parts of the wall falling down and whatnot. So I think that the sooner that we get it, that we get it engineered and look at what are the, what are the possible solutions to this and kind of evaluating what those options are and what that timeframe is going to look like, the better that we're going to be. This is probably going to be something that moves into, into 2024. But the sooner that we get an evaluation done, I think the better.
So I talked to somebody today, they're working on the, after policy meeting, they were at the St. Vincent de Paul, and I gave you a phone number there.
I do have that contact information. You know, once, once we start to look at, you know, possible suppliers and vendors and fixes, we can definitely reach out to that gentleman. Thank you. Don't you think that 73,000 is a lot? I mean, if the project was only going to be 300,000 to fix that? I mean, should we go back out for additional pricing? We, I mean, we could. I mean, I think 300,000 is optimistic. I mean, that was based on that 2020 study that we had looked at prior to. Depending on the scope of what we're looking at, we might be, and a lot of this could depend on the geotechnical. I mean, what they tell us, once they do some borings and some pieces, is the what's under the sidewalk in Fifth Avenue and how extensive the fix is going to need to be and the repair needs to be. What we're asking for here is an increase in the engineering piece to look at widening that scope so that we have a true understanding of what we need to do to do it correctly and to do it right, to make sure that we have a long-term solution, not a short-term solution to that facility.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? If those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose to be.
No, opposed to B.
So we have, how many agree? We have five, five-two? Motion passed, okay. Okay, under new business, we have an external request from the Altoona Police Department for use of facilities. Do we have a motion on that item?
So moved.
Is there a second? Discussion? Those in favor respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Do we have any committee chair reports? Okay, any other committee reports? Board president's report, I have none. Superintendent's report?
Good evening, everyone. I'm actually going to give Ms. Klein's report. She's unable to be here this evening for a very reasonable reason. And this is from her words, "Hello, everyone. I hope you're all having a great fall, and I'd like to apologize for not being able to be here today. As you might know, the Aaron Dodson Memorial Volleyball Game is tonight versus Holliesburg. At this event, there will be a 50-50 raffle, a basket auction, and a duck toss, all of which goes to proceed, all the proceeds go into the Aaron Dodson Memorial Scholarship." So she's at a very worthwhile cause this evening, so we'd like to excuse Ms. Klein and thank her for representing our school district well. A new initiative started by the Mountain Line Maniacs is Stellar Student Shout-out, where a new teacher will nominate a particularly exceptional student twice a month. Our first student chosen this month was Rocco DePiro, who was selected by Mr. Adams. The Maniacs have also begun new theme days throughout the school year titled Funky Fridays. Every second and fourth Friday, the students of the high school are encouraged to participate in school spiritware. The next upcoming theme, September 29th, is Hawaiian. Rehearsals have started for the 2023 Fall Play titled A Monster Calls. The play is set from November 3rd to 4th, and all are encouraged to support the Altoona Drama Department. Fall sports have started in full effect this year. A couple of victories include the Altoona Football versus Mifflin County, Haley Kravitz's game-winning four goals against Holliesburg in girls' soccer, boys' soccer gaining a 7-0 win against Mifflinburg, and cross-country participated in the Altoona Invitational on 9/16. And tennis is completing, competed in another invitational on Friday. In case you've noticed, when we tried to park here this evening, we got a ton of things going on on campus in addition to the Aaron Dodson Memorial Volleyball Game. Obviously, we have, we have activities going on at Roosevelt Field with our girls' soccer program and other initiatives throughout the district. Fall's a very busy time. I know today that we had girls' soccer, or excuse me, girls' tennis after school. We had multiple football games out at Mansion Park, and we were going out to the county seat for a boys' soccer match with Holliesburg here later this evening. So we're in full swing. Our kids are doing well, student athletes are doing well, and want to commend them on their efforts. The Homecoming Dance is readily approaching this October 5th with the following homecoming game on October 6th. To celebrate the week of festivities, high school will have theme days October 2nd through October 6th, and our yearly games night will be October 2nd. So I want to thank Ms. Klein for her report this evening in her absence. One other thing, I just wanted to comment that our school district team comprised of Ms. Foreman, myself, Mr. Pfeffer, and Mr. Neely presented at a regional safety conference today reviewing our swatting incident from last March and all of the subsequent steps that the board and the district has taken to solidify safety in our school district. So again, I want to thank you for everything that you've done. I can see when we presented, the jaws dropping about the commitment that our community and our staff and our board has to student safety. So I want to commend you for those efforts and thank Officer Pfeffer and his team for their ongoing efforts to keep our school district and our staff and our students safe. Thank you.
Okay. We have for information only, A, the new teacher induction program completion for 2023, B, the facilities committee meeting summary for July 27th. Okay, other comments? Do we have an employee union's response? A middle management response? Solicitor?
Now, I want to say, other than to wish you all the best with the games tonight and through the, everything else for the rest of the school year. I don't know if you, and I know that, Cody, did you want to say anything about our symposium? Is that already? I don't know if you, and I know that, Kurt, did you want to say anything about our symposium, is that already? Thank you.
Our district, we have a team, about twelve people there, so we're, we're very much looking forward. Excellent, so we, we have V I P seating, so we're looking forward to it.
So all the items on the agenda?
Mr. President, I liked on um, eleven B with the facilities meeting. I miss, I do walk around the schools inside and outside, now it's in the A building, and I talked to the teachers. How's things going, how's your air conditioning, they said if we could get blinds in our room. For the A building with the blistering sun coming in, so there is some, you know, we'd like to walk around and. Ask questions and what do you need so far, so, so perhaps down the road, we can look in the blinds, because we're putting. Cardboard on there, keep the hot sun from coming in. Thank you.
Okay, could we have a motion for adjournment? Second? I'll second that, when anybody opposed?